Yeah, let's call the media to order and address the bled allegiance.
Bled allegiance to the flag for United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, universal, the election of justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda? I know, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we're still doing roll call voting. We will, first of all. Any motions to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt agenda.
Motion by Timmerman.
Second.
Second by Novak. All in favor will do roll call, uh, a vote, yay. Kate?
Yay.
Don? Josh?
Hi.
You have Josh. There you go. All right, motion passes. Agenda is adopted. We have no presentations, proclamations, or acknowledgements tonight. Uh, brings us to public comment. Uh, Commissioner Wolf, you're on with us, right?
I am, can you hear me?
You can hear you.
Wow, that's awesome. Yeah, just, just a couple of things. We're, um, we're happy that this, uh, you know, this thing is starting to lift and people are going to be able to go back to work. Um, our road projects are all just humming along here because, uh, the weather's been great. There's no traffic. Um, it's, I'm telling you, there, a lot of them are, uh, ahead of schedule, pretty good. One big concern we're looking at right now is what effect this is going to have on our budget. And, uh, I think I report to you that we're, that we're, uh, you know, letting people pay their taxes, uh, their May 15th by July 15th. Um, and we're, you know, hoping that goes well, but we're very worried about the October 15th payment. So, and that affects you guys as well. So, we're, um, we're keeping an eye on it and, uh, hopefully, uh, we can adjust, uh, see what happens with it. So, any questions?
Is there any contingency plans being worked on or any thoughts as to how to roll doctor over 15 payments if it does get delayed or something, something along those lines?
Can you repeat that, Joe?
Is there any, any contingency plans being worked on or any, uh, strategy as to how to handle it back to over 15 payments don't come in on time?
Yeah. At, at our end, we've, we stopped hiring, I mean, as soon as, you know, this thing was started, I, I told Leslie, I, I think we need to, uh, you know, put a freeze on hiring, which they did. And so we have not really, I think, essentially hired anybody in six or seven weeks. Um, so there's been some retirements and some of that stuff. We're starting to look at different projects and different things that we're doing and, you know, we're going to put some things on hold that, uh, you know, maybe weren't, uh, you know, front burner type stuff that we were going to do and, uh, you'll just see how this shakes out and see where the finances are, even our, even our half cent sales tax. We think we may be down, uh, you know, a half a million to a million dollars on. And, uh, you know, that money was mostly accounted for for projects here through 2022. So, yeah, we're, uh, um, we're, you know, we're not getting out the, the big acts, but, uh, we're, you know, we're sharpening it, so.
All right, anyone else have any questions for Commissioner Wolf? Tom, we really appreciate all you guys are doing.
Yeah, okay, oh, I say that, there, one more thing is, uh, you know, Tom, Terry and I, you know, there was that workshop about, uh, with this, you know, CDA and that, uh, you know, development out, you know, going out on two. Um, we're pushing, you know, my position is that, you know, even though some people are pulling back on doing stuff, I think that's one thing that we should roll ahead on because if we don't do that, um, it's going to be another 10 or 15 years. I mean, there'll never be a good time, but if we get that going and we're ready for development when things click back in here, I think Elko New Market's the beneficiary. So, I'm, uh, and I know Tom was pushing for it too, so hopefully we can keep that thing going forward. So, all right?
Really appreciate it, Tom, thanks so much.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on this call to speak under public comment? Here in nine, we'll close public comment and move on to consent agenda. Anyone have any items that they want to pull or discuss or have questions? Yeah?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion by Timmerman. Second by Seepers. Uh, roll call vote. We'll just mix it up. Amanda, you want to go first?
Aye.
Aye. Don?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Vote aye as well. Consent agenda passes. On, we have no public hearings scheduled, so on to general business.
Going on to general business, uh, we have the authorized issuance awarding sale, uh, for the 20, Series 2028 bonds. Just to check through real quick, um, Terry Heaton is on, uh, Terry, if you want to start providing the initial background, I will pull up your presentation.
Okay, that sounds good. Uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Um, this, he, today bids were received, uh, at Baker Tilly offices on behalf of the city of Elko New Market. And so you're going to flip through the screens, Tom?
Yep.
Okay, so today, uh, we had some very good news, uh, the result, with the results that I'll be sharing with you this evening. Uh, just as a reminder, uh, next slide, please. The bonds that were sold, uh, just a quick reminder, the, the amount of the bonds were $4,965,000. Um, and this was to pay for the police station, roundabout, equipment, payment rehabilitation, and the sewer onsite generators, uh, for the amounts that are shown on this slide. So, the timing of this fund issue, I think a lot of us have been hearing what's going on in the market with the pandemic and, um, and so a lot of folks that were starting to, uh, look at bonds in February and March, there were a lot of conversations with your staff as well. There's a little uncertainty in the markets. Um, and the uncertainty, um, still is very, very low. What happened is the pandemic started, um, at one of the lowest times in history for interest rates for bonds. So, we started at a low point. You can see a bunch of volatility, uh, up and down. Uh, every new announcement on a stimulus package or more, uh, folks claiming unemployment, um, more forecasts about a miracle drug or how long this pandemic would last, uh, gave us a lot of uncertainty. So, that's what we see of the squiggles up and down. Um, but it has been settling in the last few weeks and so we've been tracking it carefully. And, um, as you'll see, it's, it's at a very stable place and also very low. And if you, this is five years, looking back even with all the instability, you're at a very low point in five years. And if you could look back 20 years, you'd see that you're in a very, these five years are low points in those 20 years. So, a great time to be going to the market. Next slide. Thank you. So, we received the bids at 10 o'clock this morning in our offices. Uh, we received six bids, uh, 31 financial institutions. And when the, at the peak of all the uncertainty, we were getting, we were happy to get two or three bids. So, they're back in the market, you've got a number of bidders again. Um, we will give you a comparison, but we were looking at about three, over 3% when we started the process. The bids that you received, the six bids, all range between 1.645% and 1.79%. So, it was incredible. And even last week, looking at other sales that were happening, we were forecasting around 2.5%. So, even our folks were a little surprised by that. Uh, the low bid came from Northland Securities at that 1.645% rate. And again, this is for people are comparing to other bonds that you're seeing. 15 and 20 year bonds, the average life, the half-life basically was the 9.143 years. And you also received a premium, so, and, and just in simplest terms, when they bid, you will, they will pay a price for your bonds and then they also pay interest rates and it's awarded based on a combination of those two. Um, and as a result, the, the premium will reduce the amount of bonds that you have to issue by, so that you only have to issue 4,585,000 because their bidding price was higher than the par amount of the bonds. Next slide. And so to compare to where we were, uh, about a month ago, the par amount, as we mentioned, is going to drop, so instead of issuing 4.9 million dollars, you're going to be issuing 4,585,000. The interest rate from 3.032 to 1.645. Um, and that, just so, just over half of what was, the interest rates have dropped by half. Um, the average debt service, in the information we provided in our pre-sale, we were estimating, and this is taking all of the debt service and dividing by 20 years, it's not exactly even, but on average about 313,000. That now will drop to about 280,000. And when we compare overall total differences, I can't really call them savings because you're comparing an estimate to actual, but 6.5 million was the estimate that you were prepared to, to pay when we went out for bids and instead you'll be paying about 5.9 million total principal and interest. That's a difference of about $664,000 in savings or less than we thought you were going to pay. Part of this, uh, savings has to do with the fact that you had some news out there that left people feeling a little bit unsettled. They heard that this pandemic is going to go on longer than they thought. And I think some folks are seeking security, moving out of the stock market a little bit and into, um, and there was a rush on that this morning, the stock market was dropping, um, right around the time that people, that the, that there was a lot of interest in your bonds. Um, and so I think that's part of it. And also we've got a number of bidders who are now coming back into the market that hadn't been there before. And so I think you're the beneficiary of all of that with a much lower rate. And the other big piece of it is your very high credit rating. And so some of you that are, that, um, may recall or may know that you have a, a double A plus bond rating, that's the shaded area. And so just for the viewing public, the very highest rating that you can get is a triple A. And then there are double A categories. Um, the, the middle rating agency, S and P, Standard and Poor's, is the agency that reads your bonds. And so they use a plus and minus system and so does Fitch. Moody's uses a one, two, and three, um, and that's interchangeable with that. So, the very second highest, one notch away from a triple A is where the city of Elko New Market sits. And then double A, double A minus, then there's the single A groups and then triple Bs. And again, all of those are still investment grade bonds and it's when you get down into, um, lower grades, Cs and, uh, and, and lower, there's several that are below that category. So, you're very high at the top and, um, I think this is something that, so, you know, folks are, are very, that's what, what people are really looking for now in credit. They're afraid that if the pandemic goes on, they're looking at the single A is dropping down to triple Bs, triple Bs dropping down from there. And so it'd be the fact that you're at such a high rating, even if there are any concerns. And second of all, you don't have a lot of volatile revenues. Uh, yet we've got property taxes, but you don't rely on a lot of these really volatile revenues, so very stable up, up top, double A plus. And I think that's the other reason people are really excited about your investment. Speaking of the credit rating, um, and I should just say, when people talk about credit ratings, the higher your credit rating, the lower your interest rate because they feel like they will get repaid for that. There's a high chance of, of repayment. And so that's why it's so important to have a very high credit rating. Some of the items from the report are that you have a strong economy, um, with a broad and diverse metropolitan statistical area, the Minneapolis-St. Paul's very strong and that's part of why, um, uh, it's, it's good to be aligned with them. Strong management, good financial policies and practices. Um, and so during the rating call, Tom and Kelly went through all of the practices and documents that are shared with the city council and they were very thorough in the review of that. Um, strong budgetary performance, they look at, they really focus on the general fund, but they also focus on, uh, the governmental funds, all of them in total, looking at last year, this year, and budgeting for next year. Uh, strong budgetary flexibility with strong fund balance, meaning that you've got options, you're not completely draining the funds or, um, and that you've got consistent ability to expect that your year-end results are going to be, um, strong so that you're not going to have to, uh, dip into other funds to make it work or do short-term borrowing. Strong liquidity, you've got a lot of, uh, funds that are reserved for specific reasons and they align with your policies. You do have a, a weak debt and contingent liability profile and you, and so two things I'll say about that. One is, in Minnesota, we oftentimes see weak debt even on triple A credits. And that's because in Minnesota, um, there's just more debt because you can issue debt without having to go to referendum for absolutely everything. And a lot of other states have different rules. And we maintain the roads. If you drive around the country, you'll see that the maintenance of the, the, the infrastructure is also done very well. And so that's a concern they have, they don't want to see cities deteriorating. The other big piece is that you're not stretching out your debt to super-long periods, keeping them paid off in 10, 15 years. And in fact, 67% of all your debt will be repaid within 10 years, which is a strength. And, um, and as I tell people, every city goes through this, you are in a growth period, so you have to expend the money before your tax base fills in. And then as you are fully developed, then your tax base is there and then you sometimes don't need as much capital. So, you're still in this growth phase and that's another reason we see weak debt. And the most important is the stable outlook as we're moving into the, finishing up with the pandemic. And there were a number of questions about that, that your staff also did a, a great job of communicating on. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, um, that you might have.
I don't have any, looking around, I don't see any, also, any other question. Uh, this is, Josh is shaking his head. I, this is just great news, Terry. Seen an interest rate of 1.64.
64 is, uh, uh, pretty, pretty impressive, so thank you so much.
Congratulations, I didn't pick the day, but it was a great day to be in the market.
So, at this point, Mr. Mayor, we would be looking for a motion from the council to adopt resolution 2033, which would authorize issuance awarding sale prescribing the form in detail and providing for the payment of the general obligation bonds, Series 2028.
So moved. Second? Motion, motion by Novak, is that a second, Josh?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Berg. Uh, Josh, you vote first.
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Amanda? I vote aye as well, passes by here. Thanks again, Terry, for.
Thank you.
Okay, on to reports, administration.
Um, yeah, a second, just a minute. Um, just, uh, the regular COVID-19 updates, uh, we're continuing to move towards normalization of city operations. Uh, first thing I wanted to talk about was with city halls, since the governor's executive order, um, has opened up, um, Minnesota for counterfacing businesses, even though we are an essential business and could have been open already, um, we've taken the safer route. But now that it's open, there's no reason, I feel, since most, all retail's going to be open, that we can't be open as well. So, it'd be my intent on Monday with having certain COVID protocols in place to open the city hall doors for public. I would still recommend to the council that we do not have audiences because you're talking more than the 10 people that's recommended. So, I would continue until they raise that gathering size to about 50, that we will continue to hold, uh, close meetings and do them, or do them more intrinsically. Um, I'll be communicating staff tomorrow with the exact COVID protocols to be, I've had sessions with them today, but that would be my intent. Is there any feedback from council, um, that we shouldn't move in that direction?
Josh?
Will be, Novak.
Um, from community event standpoint, I'd say the council update early would be that we've made a decision to reschedule fire rescue days for the weekend, September 11th through 13th. Uh, we'll begin, uh, communicating that in newsletter, uh, social media. Um, I believe Patrick will probably have something along those lines in an article, uh, he checked with me today on it. Um, and then I also know the chamber's already communicated, so, uh, more details to come in the future. Right now, we're just going to have people put a placeholder on their, on their calendar.
Do we think that's going to have a, a major impact on, and it's beyond our control, but I would assume a lot of cities are doing this. I think Lakeville is looking the weekend after, that's typically Jesse James days down in Northfield, uh, it just, are we going to have issues with vendors or things like that? Maybe we just can't control it, I suppose, so.
We don't believe so because we actually don't have a lot of onsite vendors during events. Um, Panda Frog went to the last weekend, September, the Zinky Days went to the weekend before that, that's why we chose the weekend before that, we're ahead of those two. So, from the market standpoint, we'll be having ours sooner. Um, if, if we have conflicts with other surrounding, um, festivals, there's always a festival going on every weekend, but those are the ones that are going to create the race competition for us. So, um, we made sure to stay away from those when we do rescheduling. We also feel, um, either stuff's going to be open in September or it's not, and early September is going to provide us the best chance of having, um, a good weather scenario for the.
Right? Okay, thanks, Tom.
If we could move on to public safety, any travel announcements related to parks?
Yeah, that's fine, nothing public works, then.
Uh, no, just the written report, just the written report.
Okay.
Can I, can we go, just a minor suggestion for that Fire Rescue Day, that'll be the, that Sunday will be the Vikings-Packers, uh, opening kickoff game of the, of the season, if the season happens. So, perhaps, uh, our Fire Rescue Days event staff could, uh, plan some fun little activity for that game.
Well, it's a possibility.
Yeah.
Yep, I'll make sure that.
That's all I'm done.
Mark, are you on the call?
Yeah, I sure am.
So, um, I skipped parks earlier, Mr. Mayor, but if you'd like to do, please, Mr. Mayor.
I got first on.
Okay.
You, you want me to go through that real quick or? On the parks? Okay. Uh, just basically the Wyatt Park shelter remains closed, we, uh, have all events canceled through Sunday, the 7th, and we've notified the users and fees are being returned. Um, actually, we review it every, uh, the, for, Monday of each week and then just kind of roll it, uh, through there based on the governor's weekly update. We're not accepting any new applications or even offering, uh, those users with canceled dates the option of choosing another date, uh, in the future at this time. We really don't know what's going to be happening here. The escape park remains closed, it's as classified as facility, along with the shelter. And, uh, the Little Windrose basketball hoops are not currently up, uh, for the same reason that more than 10 people may gather there. Playgrounds are open, uh, that's subject to morning signage at each park, uh, from what I've observed, being out there, uh, a couple, three days a week, uh, seems to be working pretty well. Uh, I'm sure we'll see more use, obviously, when school, uh, is over. Uh, parks and trails do remain open, uh, as they have throughout the state homeowner, uh, order, excuse me. Uh, no summer events have been scheduled at this time. Well, uh, we're looking at, uh, maybe scheduling something, uh, in August, uh, three or four, uh, events there, two, we might coordinate them with, uh, they might slip into September and maybe communicate, coordinate them with, uh, Fire Rescue Days, one on a Thursday in September, which I think will be the 8th or 9th, I can't remember. The one, uh, before the community picnic or something like that. So, we're, we're looking at those and, uh, seeing what we can, uh, see what we can do. Um, kids' baseball softball program, I, uh, talked to Jamie Caffey and, uh, indicated that they'll be looking at it on June 1st. We talked a little bit about liability as I have with, uh, uh, with the soccer program and Janelle. Uh, right now, that remains on schedule, uh, as, uh, as is. And as I told Tom, uh, the, the liability issue really of running, uh, a, uh, girls' and boys', uh, baseball softball program is something that we're going to have to take a real deep look at, uh, there as well, too. Uh, uh, I attended a seminar on, uh, by Zoom and, uh, very interesting in terms of, uh, humidity and potential liability for cities. Uh, and truthfully, it's, we do require insurance, uh, for our parks. Question is, uh, can they buy any, uh, that covers coronavirus and, uh, all, as you imagine, it's kind of a quiet war at this point, but, uh, they'll be looking at that again on June 1st and, uh, we'll be working with them as well, too. The community room that, uh, I don't know, we've mentioned it before, but the community room, uh, for the library, uh, over there remains closed, we're not taking, obviously, any, uh, schedules, uh, already, people to use it. Uh, and I'm sure you've heard that the, the library is doing, uh, a drive-through, you can go online, uh, pick up your books, uh, at the library as well, too. Uh, and I think I might have written a Facebook post on that last week as well, too, on that. So, that's where we are right now. Any, any questions?
The last item I have to, uh, report that's COVID-related is we've been in discussions with, um, Elko Speedway specifically related to the drive-in theater. Uh, there's two elements to it. The first part is they are looking to put together an operations plan that would allow them to open up under the current executive orders that would allow them to be able to provide a venue for graduation ceremonies for the local school districts. And they would be looking to market two districts beyond that as well, but of course, those priority to the local school districts. Um, the second part of it is the same protocol that would, you would put in place for that, um, should be able to allow them, if they chose to do so, open up the drive-in theater. Uh, but under the protocols, they're looking at an increased space in between the vehicles, people are required to stay in their vehicles, except that they have to urgently use the bathroom. Uh, the bathrooms would be sanitized between users, um, they would have enhanced security to make sure, encourage people to stay in their cars, those types of things. And the, um, Minnesota Department of Education state has guidelines that if you're going to do that type of an event, uh, that the schools would need to follow within terms of the event. I think that the, um, staff over at the track have done a really good job on putting together a concept, uh, where he's reviewed it, um, run it, asked the attorney to make sure that it appears it would be consistent with, uh, the governor's executive orders. We feel comfortable that it is now, we just need to work through the details and notify our local school district that that's an option. So, I just wanted to let the council be aware of that, there's a potential that this could get a little bit of crests because a lot of the school districts aren't able to do anything like this. We have the advantage of this venue in towns or, or local school districts and other major districts.
Mark, I, I know this probably isn't the most fun time to be a parks director, but uh, appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you very much. It's, uh, certainly challenging, let's put it that way.
Brady?
Good evening.
How are you?
Wonderful, thank you. Um.
Anything COVID-related, Brady?
Oh, am I up now or am I?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're just doing COVID updates.
It's following down here, okay, okay.
Uh, no COVID updates. Good.
Something beyond the full course, Mr. Mayor, for the regular report, Brady did, or, um, Corey didn't have anything specific for me to report to the council, you have a report in your package.
I guess, uh, public, well, I don't know if this would be the right time or not to discuss, uh, the detours for the Roundabout project.
We can talk about that, which has an update related to the Roundabout project under your section, so.
We'll table that for now. Brady? Uh, you, you have, uh, have an update for us?
Yes, are you ready for it?
I think so.
Uh, just a couple, a couple of three points. Uh, one of them is a shout-out to the Meadow Walk and Public Safety Fire Department. Um, we were able to, uh, utilize their drone to document both the police department build and the roundabout build, um, for the city. Uh, since it is a city project, they felt it was important for, um, them to come out and help. So, uh, hats off to the Public Safety Fire Department at the, um, Casino Meadow Walk and Sue. Um, that is a huge, um, deal for us and quite a bit of a cost savings as well. So, that's wonderful. Uh, just the footage that Tom and I have seen already is really neat and it's going to make a neat project once, uh, it's all done. Um, next, I'm going to move on to a big popular topic, ATV permits and ordinance issues. Um, next, I'm gonna move on to a big popular topic, ATV permits and ordinance issues. Um, we are well over a hundred permits and I think pretty soon, I didn't check today, but I think we're gonna be over, or up to about a hundred and ten permits. Um, in my report, I put the breakdown, which I found was interesting, uh, forty ATV, forty-five golf carts and then other for, uh, UTVs. Um, I, it way exceeded my expectation. I know Lonsdale's had the ordinance for, uh, a couple of years and we've blown by how many permits they've issued. Um, I'm seeing them out there as I'm driving around. Um, we're getting a lot of compliance. However, um, there's a lot of work still to do. We have, um, had nine and now we're up to eleven since my report that I issued, issues or complaints or calls for ATVs, golf cart complaints. Mostly what we're seeing is, uh, uh, still continued juvenile use and, uh, use without permits. Um, we haven't had any damage yet, but just today at about three o'clock this afternoon, our cars responded to a ATV accident outside of El Codo Market, just off of two eighty. And, uh, um, just south of two eighty and east of ninety-one, um, guy crashed on it. It's gonna be okay, non-life threatening injuries, but, um, I think we've done an awesome job as a city, continue to get compliments, continue to, uh, get positive feedback about what we did and how we did it. So very proud. Hats off to you guys for taking on that task and I think, uh, it's gonna be nothing but positive. Um, any questions about ATV issues at all in town? Okay, another, another thing is in, uh, Pete's Hill Park, um, on the trails and driving on the trails. So we're gonna continue to keep doing our education phase. Uh, sit up there as much as we can to try to, uh, catch people, to educate them and cite them if needed. So, um, I, we're excited about how it's going. Uh, Officer Brenton, our newest officers, advanced to Phase Two, which is really exciting. He's now with, uh, Officer Garice and, uh, he's expected to, if everything goes well, be done at the end of June, early July, where he'll be on his own for the summer, which is perfect timing. It's great to have him, uh, being on his own, so we have better coverage. Um, besides that, uh, the movie theater, Tom already covered, that was the other point. Uh, I think they've done a wonderful job, uh, in talking with them, their safety plans, their security. They've stepped up everything for this and I think they're very deserved. So I'm glad to see, I saw a lot of shaking heads, yes, for support of that. Um, other than that, I'll open it up for any questions, if any of you have.
I have one, but oh, does anybody else have? Okay, I, just curious, did, uh, I don't know if you're aware, there was a little parade on over the weekend. Uh, and, uh, I've heard, I'm sure I'm not the only one that heard various, uh, comments about a lack of social distancing. I, how are you, how are you guys responding to those sorts of calls? I know I've asked you before, but things change daily, so I'm just curious.
Sure, uh, they really do. Uh, in regards to that incident, um, uh, I hate to use the generic, it is what it is, but, um, you know, it wasn't portrayed to us, uh, how it ended up being. We did not know there was gonna be, uh, impromptu car show block party type of thing. Um, I, I, I tell my family, I tell my kids, I tell a lot of people, um, we worry about what you can control and not what you can't control. Um, I think this COVID thing, um, means different things to different people and as far as my officers, I've told them all that. And, um, we have built and spent so much time and effort building up our reputation in the community. Uh, I'm not, and my officers aren't willing to damage that reputation with, uh, heavy-handed COVID response and crushing and, and breaking up people and everything like that. We live in a society of personal accountability and if, if someone says they don't know what's going on in our society right now, um, and they still choose to stand next to somebody and somebody doesn't step back from them or interfere, I don't know what we can do. Um, realistically, people don't understand that we have five full-time officers and two part-time officers in a city of five thousand people. Um, we have one officer working most of the time. Um, we do have a little overlap, so two officers. And then when I portray it to them, what can we do? And, uh, how do we stop a group of twenty people from having a bonfire where there's no social distancing? I'm not willing to endanger my officers or our reputation in the community to take heavy-handed enforcement. And, uh, I think, um, if called, we'll take action if we can. We've taken, um, I, I just had a two-hour meeting with the rest of the chiefs of police in Scott County and they're all taking the same, if we get called or if we see it, we'll advise them of the executive order, we'll advise them of what's going on and then we will disperse. I mean, we, we can't force twenty, thirty people to disband and I'm, I don't wanna get hurt doing it. So that's the overall philosophy is personal responsibility. Um, control what we can control and, uh, protect our reputation in the community while doing it.
So you're not bringing in SWAT to break up parties?
No, um, no, uh, no heavy-handed, um, listen, if, if it's half a dozen, six, you know, I mean, it's, you're depending upon who you talk to, you'll get a different reaction and, but everybody's consistent that you have to protect yourself, you have to protect your family and you do what you can control and that's yourself. And if you choose to go and walk down a street and stand in line for funnel cakes, um, that's up to you. And, uh, you know, whatever consequences come from that, you'll have to suffer them. So we can't have police breaking up with batons and pepper spray and trying to get people to disperse. It's just not gonna work.
I think that was very well said, Brady. I appreciate it.
I can't, I can't hear some of the comments. What?
It's a lot of bad things about.
Bad things? Good things?
Anyone else have anything for Chief Jewel? Thanks, Brady. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Nothing for fire department?
The only thing, and I'm having discussions with the chief and assistant chief about whether or not we do hirings this year. There's some questions about the availability of the school, schooling and what that might look like. Um, availability of grants for the schooling and, um, even training for the firefighters. We don't wanna bring on firefighters a year in advance of when they might be able to get schooling. Uh, our current pool actually is very small, smallest I've seen in the fifteen years of the city. So we are having some discussions about whether or not we just, um, put a freeze on, uh, hiring new firefighters. Um, we have, uh, sufficient staffing right now, but even if we had a few retirements or a few, we should be on the band. So we have the capacity. That's where I have the most discussions right now.
Engineering. Rich, I thought you're on here somewhere, aren't you?
I am. I just had to figure out the unmute button. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yo. Uh, so the roundabout work has begun. You may have noticed there's a huge pile of dirt in the southeastern quadrant. That's to pre-compress the soils in that area before a trail gets built. Uh, that needs to sit on that for a month or two and squash that, uh, soil down so we don't have to dig it out and replace it, uh, to help the trail hold up better. The closure is scheduled for June fifteenth. Um, and that's about all I have to say about that. We did, uh, I heard you mention the detours. So these aren't, the official detours are not in the city. Um, they'll go up when the closure happens. We do have a couple of roads we think may be used as, uh, sort of incidental detours. You may have noticed that pavement markings were placed on Aaron Drive and on Glenborough today. The purpose of that is to provide subtle cues to motorists that the lanes are eleven feet wide, just to make the road kind of psychologically feel a little narrower, hopefully reduce speeds. I think that, um, community development has gathered some baseline speed and volume information. So if we do get complaints along the course of the construction, we can monitor again and, uh, provide facts as to whether speeds have increased, volumes have increased meaningfully, that type of thing. And, uh, Renee and Tom can weigh in more on that. We're, we're not involved in that in engineering, but we'll leave that's being done. And, uh, that's about it.
I, uh, and this might be a Brady question as well, but, uh, you know, as far as patrol, speed patrols, uh, digital speed signs, um, I mean, are we doing everything we can to that kind of activity?
Actually, yes, we, we had a plan initially. Um, they were gonna start next week and, uh, we are gonna do a combination of extra patrols. We're bringing on staff that are solely dedicated to driving and patrolling what we believe are gonna be the shortcuts that people are gonna be taking. Um, Corey is gonna be coordinating every day and putting the speed sign out in different locations along those, uh, what we think will be shortcuts. And then all the officers, uh, myself included, when we can, we're gonna spend time along those routes and do a heavy, heavy education enforcement, um, campaign. Um, uh, no, we're not just gonna give tickets to people from outside the city. Um, we, we are gonna do a heavy enforcement campaign. Um, so between the stripes, which was brilliant by Rich to put those on, they slow people down. There are many studies to show that. Um, and with our presence on there, um, we're even gonna park a squad car, uh, on there when we can, when we have two lawns, just park a squad car. So people see the squad car even with no one in it. So we're gonna do everything we can, um, and now everybody will know, but they won't know which one we're in. Uh, but, uh, we're gonna do all those type of tactics to, um, to try to slow people down. We can't stop them, but if they're gonna take the shortcut, we want them to do it responsibly. Um, and there's gonna be a cost to that, um, but we've, you know, displayed that to you guys in the past, what we think that's gonna be and we'll tackle it that way. And by closing it, we do know that it'll get done quicker and we can get back to normal.
Thanks, Brady. Thanks, Rich. Anyone else have anything for Rich? I appreciate it, Rich.
You're welcome.
Community development. Here, Renee.
Hi, Joe. Um, I'm good.
Good.
I don't have any, um, updates really. I just tagging on, uh, what Brady and, and Rich said. We did do a concerted effort to take traffic count and, um, speed and volume information around the community, uh, last summer and last fall. So we, we do have the data. We are getting complaints about, um, speed or, or traffic, so. And we, uh, the only thing I had in the packet was the draft planning commission, uh, meeting minutes, if anybody has any questions. Or anything else?
No questions, but I can see. So, all right. Thanks, Renee. Mark, you have anything further on parks?
Yes, uh, just, uh, like to mention the fact that, uh, next meeting we'll, uh, be going over the parks capital improvement program, uh, but in between, uh, uh, we have, uh, as well, about a quarter of a million dollars worth of parks projects going right now, uh, in the city. Uh, some you see over Rowan Pond and, uh, and, uh, Trail Connection. Uh, uh, next week we'll see the installation of, uh, new equipment over by the old City Hall, uh, park, uh, as well there too. And, uh, uh, so those, uh, we have a number of major projects. We've got, uh, uh, and then we have some assessments, uh, going on our playground equipment for, uh, safety as well too, on some of the older things. Make sure that we're up to stuff on that. Uh, so, uh, we'll talk about the future, uh, here on May twenty-eighth and, uh, uh, just to let you know that, uh, uh, there is a lot. It's, it's construction all over, uh, here, uh, this, this summer, it looks like. I wanna thank, uh, Corey, uh, and Rich. Uh, these guys have been, uh, marvelous answering, uh, citizen questions, uh, you know, uh, sometimes the same one ten times and, uh, I really appreciate, uh, their help. And, uh, uh, they do just a great job out there for us as well too. So just wanted to get that in. Other projects include four forty-eight Main Street. Uh, we're taking bids on, uh, cleaning, uh, out the asbestos and then, uh, demolishing that as well. Uh, you should see that on your next council meeting or two. And, uh, we are also at work on the class and compensation study, which will fold into the, uh, budget coming up here, uh, deliberations coming up here in June as well too. So if you have any questions, uh, let me know.
Not seeing any. Thanks so much.
You bet.
All right. GCEC. Okay. Uh, county reports, uh, we did have a, uh, scale meeting last week. Um, and I saw you be on there. You were on there. You were out there. I'm not sure if Josh is on. Uh, I think it went surprisingly well for having eighty people, uh, counter call and no one really knowing what they're doing, but we muddled through it and I think we pulled it off to make it actually look like we were doing so. Yeah, thank you. Um, so, uh, June, we'll have our scale exec meeting and then we'll have our scale meeting on this, no, July meeting. And I think there's a hope, a hope that maybe in August we can go back to some form of in-person meeting, but we're a long ways away from that, so. Um, service delivery. Anything for service delivery has canceled this off? Yeah. Uh, we don't have anyone on me by transit. MBTA?
I don't have anything else, please.
I thirty-five?
We had a, a meeting this morning. Um, not a lot of, uh, big things to talk about besides the fact that everything's kinda getting delayed. Bonding bill is in jeopardy uh, due to all the COVID, uh, attention and then with, uh, the governor extending the, um, the emergency peacetime, uh, deal or whatever. Um, I personally think it was a brilliant move on his part to, to lift some of the business restrictions, but then extend that to kind of put the, the Republicans in, in a spot to see if they're gonna still block the bonding bill. Um, uh, but, uh, otherwise they sent out, uh, some of the reports, um, that I think Tom forwarded on to everybody. Um, major revenue hit to a variety of the different funds out there because people are driving less and, uh, paying for a lot less gas and everything. So we'll see how that all shakes out. But, uh, I don't know if Commissioner Wolf's still on or not, if there's anything else to add, but that was pretty much it. Commissioner, uh, from Mindot was there today too, giving kind of an update and overview, but.
Yeah, I'm on still and I think that's a good update. Yep.
Thanks, Commissioner Wolf.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Josh. You got anything else? All right. Uh, Chamber of Commerce, I haven't been in contact with, uh, Josh Melwitz. I was not this week at all. I'm, um, hey, have you?
We had our meeting, um, on Tuesday. Nothing. No.
All right. Okay, uh, discussion by council. Looking around, no one has anything. Josh, you got anything? Uh, with that, anyone wanna motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion by Temperman. Second by Seabird. Let's go, uh, all in favor, Dot?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
I will, I as well. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.